President.
President.
Provisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to adjourn on the second. In favor?
Aye.
Public agenda. This is the time and place for discussion items already on agenda with the ten and the agreement on each. Discussion possible action on joining these turf tank paint sprayer with Lisbon School.
So Drayton and I met with Brandon Horman here at City Hall about the questions that you had. We made several phone calls to a lot of the school districts and cities that currently share, for instance, Albert Net shares in Central City, Mount Vernon and Cornell, I think Solon has it, and Northland.
Northland, the sheriff was somebody.
Springville has it. So, the guy told us that nobody would ever, has ever ran out of paint. He said that Northland has three football fields, full-sized football fields that they use every year, and they share in paint with somebody. The guy said they've ran low, but he said it's a big problem to have, so he don't have all this excess paint. So he says there's gonna be no issue running out of paint.
Okay.
The warranty, we called around and the owner.
Run out of paint for which plan?
What's that?
For both, for both halves forever. Did A or B?
Oh, sorry, the, the plus. Going with the plus.
Yeah.
Um. The en, the only issue they have with any of the machines from any of these places we called wasn't an antenna fell off?
Yeah, it's all, wasn't anything to do with the actual machine itself.
So, the thought would be, okay, most of these places have had to be a year or two. So the thought is if you can get through that first year without any issues, you, you save five thousand dollars that you would have, you could technically spend in year two, and if you spent that in year two, you'd still be even versus going with Pearl.
So they'll let you upgrade after the first year?
They said they would, however, there's a, there's a higher fee for doing it, for going there later because of the warranty paperwork. But in real, reality is year two then, if you're still at this plus level for your savings, you could have ten thousand dollars go wrong with that unit, and you'd still be at equal dollars. So, it's up to you guys what you wanna do, but it's, everybody we talked to had the plus. The guy selling it recommended the plus. That's kinda where, I think that answered all your questions.
Would. Is the school still moving with it?
Yep. So it'd be, do the city of Lisbon's lease, we would house it here, and they would come get it when they need it. We did pencil it all out, what were we drinking, then, it was real close to equal when we figured out what they needed for football, and then what we would need it for. We did also find out that they are using this over chalk for, like, baseball fields. So that was something else, we also found out that this is, this is the go-to versus using chalk that conventionalized.
So the, my, another question is, if it, something was to go along with Springville's paint spray, or how does that, how would that work, could they say you can borrow it?
We would have to figure that out, but we could very easily be in that, if we don't wanna let people borrow it, we don't wanna let people borrow it, but, and if we get into a pinch, I see what, I see what you're saying.
But I'm just saying, we, as the taxpayers pay, you know, they pay, pay a, well, you know, split a hundred and some thousand dollars between the two cities, it's supposed to be sharing, sharing the city.
Do we, uh, do we draw a agreement with this, or is it putting it in part, in part lease?
It'd be probably, I, I suggested it be part of the part lease, so we just up that to fifteen thousand.
With according to the part lease, I mean, you wouldn't be able to give it to somebody in Springfield.
Technically it'd be ours, so it'd be our say, now, you know, we can figure out, I'm, I'm open either way, I totally know what you're saying, but the nice thing would be is if we ever needed one, it'd be nice to have. I think, I don't know that, you know, I think a lot of times what we do now is we share with Mount Vernon, that's an easier option for us.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion.
So did the school talk, they, they want the eleven thousand one too?
They said they prefer the eleven, but they would, they would still do the sixteen if we thought that was better.
Make a motion to approve this rural body square for eleven thousand.
Second. Motion to a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion possible action on implementing an employee assistant program.
So we needed to, uh, I had an employee come to me for this, and we did not have a contract in place with anywhere, so, um, we, I had worked with Synchrony in the past, which is in Iowa City, maybe work now currently, it's a hundred and seventy-five, or, it's seventy-five dollars an hour. So as I was talking to them, they put together a contract that would cover twenty employees, and it's five hundred dollars for the entire year, that includes six free counseling sessions per person and per family, so it can cover spouse and children of our employees. So basically this would cover all of our staff, the library staff, the paid staff, the fire station, and that got us the twenty. And so for a five hundred dollars total for a year, I thought it was kind of a no-brainer, but I did share with Mark, our city attorney, he thought it was a great idea, so it's in front of you if you'd like to do that, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Make a, what total?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Of the six.
Families.
Plus their families, six visits per employee.
So, what would it be for fifty? Because.
Fifty, uh.
Why wouldn't, you said the fire department and the paid staff and the fire department, why wouldn't you just wanna do it for the whole fire department?
So if you went fifty, so their deal is twenty employees for five hundred dollars, if you go anything over, above that, it's a dollar per employee, and then it's seventy-five dollars an hour. So, you could, you could potentially do every single person, but then if, if let's say five people used it, you'd be over your five hundred. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they charge by the hour.
I'm just, I'm just saying, there's one for all, we call it, for everybody, 'cause you know, the city, this, the fire department is, it does get paid on the work on some companies, and they are, get paid a yearly stipend.
I heard the contract too, Rick, if there was an incident that happened and a firefighter needed to use this, they would be able to, we would just have to be paying, they would just want to be covered in the yearly contract part, but they could utilize it.
This is just a cheaper option for everybody, yes, so somebody, somebody came to us, said, now keep in mind, we have like a certified chapel now, that we share with Mount Vernon, but if we, if they did have incident, yes, we could, we could still send them there outside of contract, but this is, for five hundred dollars will cover your payroll staff.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Yeah. Sure.
The motion approved, uh, implementing an employee assistant program for the, what?
Just with Synchrony?
Employees and fire department paid staff.
Through Synchrony, yep.
Second. Motion to a second, all favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion possible action in reference to payment warrants that come in after the council meeting, but prior to June thirtieth, coming through.
So this is just the end of the year, trying to work the budget, obviously it's done on the thirtieth, if we have some stuff that need prior to the end of the year, have a lot of funds available, we'd like to take care of those.
Still one-time deal? How many weeks?
Just the next six days. Covering this year.
Yeah. I was just clarifying.
Yep.
Motion to approve the, uh, payment of warrants that come in after, uh, company.
Motion to a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion possible action in reference to payment to camp studios for downtown redevelopment program, a lot of one thousand, one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety-one cents.
Alright, so this paperwork's in your packet, Becky's also online if you have questions. She completed the work which you guys approved, twenty-three hundred and thirteen dollars and five cents, it actually came under budget at nineteen hundred and forty dollars and ninety-one cents, she was able to get a little cheaper bid on the painting, so, everything looks good, historic preservation approved at their meeting last week, and so recommend you guys pay that or answer any questions that you have, or ask any questions.
Motion to approve a payment.
Motion to a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close.
The way they have it, I'd like to see more of them to come in.
So have the new twenty thousand started in July or October?
Resolution seventeen twenty, twenty four, approving fiscal year one thousand five salaries.
So this is the annual cost of living salary increase, it was discussed previously, about five percent, library staff has approved five percent, and so that's in front of you if you wish to discuss or change it or approve.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve to a second.
I'll second.
Name?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe? Resolution nineteen point point four, property needs for mowing fees.
This is for four nineteen South Jackson Street and five oh three South Jackson, keep in mind, these were done prior to the increases, so we've followed the steps, they have not complied with payment, you can see it's put back to May, so we're just moving forward with the lien and going forward, it'll be under the new schedule.
Motion to approve the liens against the property.
Motion to a second.
Second.
Kevin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty, twenty and twenty-four, approving the frame, fund transfers.
Uh, this is the annual end of the year fiscal year transfers from accounts, Christine, do you have anything to add?
Uh, so the first one you'll see on there was, would be a bond payment, one that we were doing, the other, there's an account so that way we don't have any naked balances for our auditor, you guys are used to the emergency fund levy that just gets put in, we just wait till the end so we have a total amount that's switched into the general, and then the other two are just for the previous downtown investment, and then the one that you guys just paid tonight, it goes from one account to the other, so that way, that accounts also used up.
Motion to approve the transfer funds.
Motion to a second.
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-one, twenty point four, approving hiring of library helper.
Uh, this is Amelia Kibby, Elizabeth couldn't be on tonight, she's got another program, but, uh, she has a part-time person on leave, and this is just to hire a temporary part-time person, they have a few down there, basically covers the hours when she's not available, and they have their own budget for this, uh, it's through our budget, but she maintains that, so, uh, we did a background and everything checked out, unless you know what issues are, I wouldn't approve.
Move to approve. Motion to approve to a second.
Second.
Name?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Which ones? Nothing to them. The engineer reported.
He is not on tonight, and he didn't have an update other than he's hoping that the next week or two we'll have a pre-con meeting and schedule for Highway thirty, and I will be sure to make everyone aware of sauerkraut days, and that's good enough.
That's all we have on the proof. Questioner?
Nope. Pop work.
Uh, we started on the west end, we even a side hill, and mowing down that, so that'll get done here this week, we got, getting the paint ready, we're gonna start on curves and then streets a little bit earlier than normal, to get that out of the way, side did take down one of the trees in question, and he said it was completely dead, the other two were, were dying, he called it from, it was an oak disease, it gets transferred to the ruts, so that's why those three went down, and he did take a couple other ash trees down, so we should be getting those holes filled this week and shoot it to some up to water and get your ass going before August.
Yep. Other questions? We have any questions? Questioner?
Not a whole lot, we are in our last week of our summer program, so that will be done come this Saturday, we'll be starting registrations for playing football and soccer in July, and we've got some events coming on, back to school night in August, when all the kids go back to school, and then we've got sauerkraut day stuff, we'll be in the park, things like that. Other than that, just wanna thank Travis and his guys for all the work out at the sports complex, if you haven't heard about out there lately, it's, they've got everything done around the building, and it looks really nice, and I'm just hoping the grass starts to come in.
I noticed that there's a cone in where the little kids play, is that, uh, are we waiting for one?
We, we, I am working with a four-H group, uh, to purchase, we're purchasing one, another digger together, the one that we had that was in there originally for oak, so we're purchasing one through a grant, and as soon as we're ready to start that project, it'll go in, so that's why that cone's there.
I just noticed that, and I know, I take Lily up to Marion and walk sometimes, and they just put one in, Marion, so I just, so they are available.
Yeah, no, we've got one, or we're in the process of ordering one actually now, so.
You said, when it comes together with the four-H group or whatever, I mean, is that like next week?
It's not next week, no, the deadline for it is, so they got five hundred dollar grant, and they're covering half the cost, so it's not just the digger that we're getting, we're getting picnic tables too, handicap picnic tables, so the whole, the project as a whole is a handicap accessible project.
Yes.
So we are going to pour concrete out to where that, where the cones at, that way a kid in a wheelchair could use that piece of equipment at the park.
Yeah.
Along with that, there's also handicap picnic tables, so, so this is all stuff I budgeted for, for this coming year, knowing that my budget, yeah, I just wanted to put it in this next budget.
We could do it next week.
Uh, no, because we don't have the equipment yet to do it, to, we could do the concrete and stuff like that, but we don't have the digger, and it's, it's all ordered, it's just not, it's, it's kind of a long process to get it.
Yeah, why can't we get it, why can't we get it here, I mean?
Because we had to order it, and it's just whenever they can get it shipped out here, it's coming.
Have you ordered it yet?
She ordered the digger, and she's getting ready to, it's Beth Ross, she's the head of the four-H group, she's getting ready to order the picnic tables, I just talked to her the other day, so.
I mean, if some, I'd, I'd like to have it here at least with sauerkraut days.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I know that the deadline for us was October, is when we have to have the project done, they're obviously busy with a lot of stuff, so I wasn't gonna press it to try and, I mean, if that's what you want, that's what we'll do, but, a part of, a part of the project.
I mean, I'm not trying to.
No, I know.
Either, but I mean, it's just things that, sauerkraut days is always our type to shine over at that park.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if we have construction going over a project, I mean, where it could be done.
Yeah, I can definitely check into it, I know that part of it, they're, the tables don't come already built, so they're doing that as a project with their group, they're building the tables and painting them and doing all that stuff, so it's, it's not gonna happen in a week, but I can see if I can get it done by sauerkraut days.
I think they're just worried about the digger drain, if you could see.
Is that all your, yeah, I mean, if that's all it is, then I can.
Just see what we can get that.
I can try and speed it in.
I have a question there, right in that area too, the diagonal parking on Jackson Street, I see we're trying to plant grass there maybe?
Yeah.
On the far north end, did, did we ever have any discussion on continuing that diagonal parking closer for the intersection?
We can't go that close with this building.
So at some point we get too close to stops and that, I realize that.
Yeah.
So we paint those curves, did you know that, and keep them from parking that way?
That, that curb will be painted right around there.
Good.
It was always grass, so when we put the water line through there, we replaced the top condition with what it was before.
Yeah.
So that's why it was.
Yeah, I understand, when there's lid leak or whatever.
Yeah.
Then you, I don't know.
But that's when we park in there, right?
What?
That's when we park in there, where the sidewalk's forward, they won't be parking obviously.
No, but they're really, you don't wanna park in.
You also don't wanna like thirty-five feet or.
Yeah, you don't wanna there anyways, you want people to get in and out from that sidewalk area too, so, and realistically, it shouldn't be a problem, once that's going to.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, once it's grass and established, so you think, still park out like they did before, but we don't wanna invite them to park there, I guess is the word I'm saying.
Yeah. Anybody got anything for Council Drayton? Library?
She didn't have anything to add, that's John, that's all.
She did?
No, I'll cover that in the comments.
You have a cover about the touch and truck, whatever?
Yeah. Aye.
Chris Berman?
He didn't have anything to add?
Amy.
Um, we're still tracking about four percent above last year, as far as our volumes go, June's been kind of a crazy month for everyone, between vacations of crew members, school getting out, a lot of that, but we've done a good job of, of maintaining coverage, working on kind of tightening our relationship with Lisbon Fire EMS side, work with Amber on a few things, and we'll continue to do that as we school up for our, our continuing education sessions this fall. We've got a speaker, or a couple presenters coming up from Tennessee for an advanced pediatrics class that we're doing in partnership with Life Guard Air Ambulance, that was primarily grant-funded, and then covered with some of the VIOX side members coming in, so we're really excited for that, for our paramedics, and then, otherwise, we're just kind of schooling up for the summer festival season, Heritage Day, sauerkraut days, and everything that comes with that, so. We did, we did get our new Tahoe, then it got sent back, so we're hoping to get that back soon, hopefully before parade season, and get that kind of on the street so people can see it, so.
Jim.
Thanks.
Third chief.
Another one thing I have is this touch and truck event, July second, it's a week from tomorrow, it'll be downtown as part of the road closure in here, consent agenda, it's five thirty to seven, and we're doing our best to get a fire truck, ambulance, some city vehicles down there, she's just having as part of her kid's night event, so, that's all I have, fire related.
Fire chief? Chief measure?
Uh, I talked to John today, it sounds like, uh, based on the unknown, still at the sports complex, sauerkraut day's gonna have fireworks at City Park this year, they had a deadline for the fireworks, for the sizes of them, size of them, so they obviously have, they were the smaller ones, so, in the future, they can get bigger ones when we head out there, but, so everything will be at City Park for that. Along with the complex update again, Drayton touched on it, all the underground work is done except for one structure, you can see that's fenced off out there, but sewer water, storm sewer is completed for this, for the southern half. Guys have been working on the pavilion, John's electric's been down as well to start the electrical area, or electrical work inside there, I think he's made good progress there. Also along with that, we had a, one of our tree limbs take out the neutral at the City Park, which put far more electricity through our system at City Park than it could handle, and it fried a couple things, so, I do have a claim in the insurance, however, it does look like it's gonna be better than we originally thought, so we may not have to go with insurance claim route, because we have a, because of our deductible, it'll probably be a little bit under that, but everything's backed up. Did they get the sprinkler system?
Yep.
Back working?
Yep.
It's a very good thing, according to our electrician, that the lights were not on, because that was no bad deal, so, anyway, I'll keep you updated on that. I talked to the contractor today, I feel like this keeps getting kicked down the road, but he's saying the sitter will be here for City Hall at the end of this week, or the first of next week, which will have that project done.
Can the, can the new sign go up?
So there.
Are they gonna wait till work's done?
So that's approved for, well, we approved, and they ordered the sign, but you can see they moved the rock out there, so they're gonna put the poles in, and I would assume as soon as it comes in, he thought it was a six-week window when he ordered it, so, as soon as the sign comes in, they'll get rolling on it, but he is starting to put the poles in. Our city engineer, or one of the engineers is in town tonight, taking pictures of the work areas for the seating of the water main project, there's still a lot of undesired looking areas, and we're gonna try to figure out at least in the area of the parade route, where people will park, like along Washington coming in, we're gonna try to do what we can to get that looking better for sauerkraut days. They're still on hook for everything, the seating window's closed, so we're just gonna see what we can do to speed the process up with that. Thanks to all the staff and volunteers from family members who worked the bulk out of pickup day, I think it sounds like we had less drop-offs than last year, but we did shorten hours too, so, I think all in all, that we provided that, I think it's a good thing. Been working with the family on a possible donation out of the sports complex towards the pavilion, so Drayton may have some information on that at coming meeting, and there's been lots of zoning and nuisances that I've been dealing with, so, that's pretty much a wrap for me, and happy to answer any questions.
But she not here and getting the new year started, so I'll be nice and busy coming up.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to say.
John?
Brandon pretty well covered my ideas, the touch and truck, a week from tomorrow will be a good, a good program for kids, and the sauerkraut committee likes the shade during the park, plus they didn't want to take a chance on hurting the, the new grass that's trying to grow, that's all I have.
I got a question, so did we vote to block the street off for that then, Brandon, or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did, I think? Oh, okay, my fault.
It's true.
Nothing.
Hey, a couple things, Liz did call me earlier about downtown, she said she did get ahold of all the businesses and everything down there, about, have the street closed, so they approved that, appreciate that, and another thing that happened in last week, we had an ex-president put out pretty nasty stuff towards some of our employees and some of our citizens and everything, and I will defend our employees if we are a hundred percent right, and we are right on this, and, I just think it's a bunch of crap, that our employees have to go through some of this stuff when we're just following the law, and I will defend them until the day I die, that if they're doing the right thing, I just wanna protest and say I'm sorry, granted. I just want to apologize and say I'm sorry, Brandon, for what she has done to you and your family. Appreciate it. Possible closed session review, student to total of Iowa section twenty-one point five L I to evaluate special competency of an individual through appointment. High performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent this needless and irreparable injury can affect individual reputation. And that an individual's request of closed session. Chris, would you like to go to closed session?